Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas. Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass. Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can you turn the volume down on these things a little bit? Are you still on? So, everyone, it's this light being on, okay? That means you're on right now.
We'll get there. Approval of the January 16th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole of January 16th, 2023.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass. Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2023 Laguna Woods subdivision roadway and ditch improvements bid award.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon. I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the bid from M&amp;J Underground, Inc. of Moni, Illinois, for the 2023 Laguna Woods subdivision roadway and ditch grading improvements in amount not to exceed $2,854,387.73, $1,712,632.64 road cost and $1,141,755.09 and 0.09 storm sewer costs.
Second. Any comments? So that people know, Laguna Woods is one of those areas that we annexed in that were under Cook County rules, and it's an older subdivision, so it has ditches and not sidewalks. And this is what we did in Fernway, and the roads essentially need to be completely rebuilt. But because of the costs associated with that and all the rest of the roads we want to do, we didn't dump all of it into Fernway and Laguna Woods at the same time because then other roads would have gotten too far gone for us to just do a surface repair on them. So this is an important part of our overall roadway projects. Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2023 Train HVAC Equipment Pullout Purchase.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the use of Omnia Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 3341 and Proposal Number R1-280045-7422-1 dated January 23rd, 2023 from Train U.S. Incorporated, $641,489 plus $3,000 contingency for a total amount not to exceed $644,849.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapter 14, Massage Establishments of Orland Park Village Code.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to recommend to the Village Board to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapter 14 of the Orland Park Village Code with regards to massage establishments."
Second.
Any comments? And so everybody's aware, we're doing this so that we put, like all of our other licenses, we put a cap on the top of these licenses so that we have more authority to say how many of these establishments. We do the same thing with liquor and tobacco and other licenses. Call the roll.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Sportsplex Roof Ladder and Gutter Project, RFP 22-068.
Trustee Reardon. I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve awarding RFP 22-068 Sportsplex Roof Ladder and Gutter Project to Solaris Roofing Solutions, Inc., for a total amount not to exceed $497,700, of which $474,000 plus 5% contingency of $23,700.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. And I think it's important to note, this project, you think about when the Sportsplex was built, and you're going to see this in the next thing that we talk about, is that all of these buildings, everything else, need to be kept up to speed. You need to put roofs on them, you need to do all those things just like you do with your house. We have a lot of that because there was a lot of growth through the village between 89 and 2005. So frankly, the village historically, because of some of the things we pushed off, kind of put all those things together, so we have a lot of tough decisions we're going to have to make.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on that point, your house is you and your family. These are commercial structures that have thousands and thousands of people coming through them, and weather hitting them. We talked about it for other buildings that I represent with clients. It gets a lot of use. Heating and air gets a lot of use, not just like your house. So it's long past time for some of this stuff.
Yep. Okay.
Strategic plan.
So we're going to talk about the strategic plan? And you've got it up? Can I control that, or I got to tell you when I need the next slide? Well, yeah, that'd be great. I don't have to ask you to flip slides for me. Thank you so much. Now if I can just figure this out. Do we have a laser pointer here, too? Oh, it won't work on the screen? Okay. Well, it'll work on above it. I see it on the wall. Okay. So we're going to talk about strategic planning, and that's a real important role for the Board. Where's the... I know she did it. I want to know where I need to point it. Okay, got it. Got it. So we, as a Board, need to do this. This has been done. So an intro to this. Generally speaking, organizations, in my experience, as someone who does this on a consulting basis for businesses, a lot of organizations fail to systematically plan, but particularly in government, we fail to systematically plan. And Orland Park has conducted strategic planning in 2012, 2015, and in 2018. I was actually here for 2018. And in 2018, our makeup of the Board were three attorneys with small practices. It was a special ed teacher, a consultant that dealt with data, somebody else who, I think, was in marketing before. I was the only one with strategic planning, but I was completely blocked out of the process, which made absolutely zero sense. And what we ended up having is we had some facilitated sessions, and they did some sessions with residents, but it was Board members selecting their friends to be sitting on those groups. And unfortunately, that doesn't necessarily give... It gives their friends information, but it doesn't really give you everything about the village. At the same time, we had facilitated sessions with our directors and with the Board. And those sessions, they weren't useless. They were useful. We got good information out of it. A very small section. I mean, basically, it would be like us sitting here right now and brainstorming, what's our strategic plan? And we would come up with some stuff that's good, that we can do over the next five years, and we would do it because we know we have a good idea of some of the things we need to do. But there was nothing else. And so it really fell short of doing everything that we needed. It was all really at the surface level. And when you do that, if a private sector, if they fail the strategically planned, their businesses go out of business, right? They start losing customers, they have poor performances, their businesses close. But we don't have... Government doesn't have the option of closing. And we can see that's the state of Illinois. We can see that with the city of Chicago, they end up in these positions where they're so far underwater that they just either keep taxing people, or they cut services, or you go through the roads and it's a war zone. You see a city like Detroit or something like that because you haven't planned properly. So it's really important that we do this to try and keep us from having to increase taxes so that we can keep people coming. Because what happens in communities is you start to fail, and then businesses leave, and then residents leave, and then you need to raise taxes more, and then more businesses leave, and more residents leave. And it's just a perpetuating cycle, race to the bottom, basically. So avoiding that cycle of failure requires us to plan. And not just for operational needs, but our capital needs, too. And we have to answer a lot of questions. Now, you see some questions up here that we're going to answer. These are kind of high-level questions. What's core to our community? How do we make sure that we properly invest in our infrastructure for the future? What can we do to attract residents and businesses? What services are most important to our residents and businesses? Zoning comes into play, and we won't necessarily do all of that in strategic planning, but we will definitely set our goals for that. How does the community engage with its regional partners, the state and the federal level, to help achieve its goals? If we're systematic about this approach, we can do it over and over and over again. So that's kind of the goal here. So this is kind of the start tonight. So what I did is I modified the frameworks that I've used in the past with businesses and kind of modified it to the village. So really, here you see a five-step process, and it's continual. So one is fact-based development. That's kind of the first thing. You've got to have a bunch of facts in order to really make good decisions. The second thing is we need to develop options and analysis. And if you think back to what I showed 2012, 2015, 2018, what we really did is did a slice of that option development. We didn't really base it on facts, we just based it on our knowledge. And then what all this does, really, is it allows us to prioritize, have a strategic plan with options, and allows us, as a Board, to make decisions and prioritize what we're going to do going forward. Then we put it into a plan, put it on paper. On paper, it's going to include things like, what are the metrics? What are we looking at? How do we make sure that we're achieving our goals? And then it's execution and continual evaluation over the planning period. So that hopefully, five years from now, when we get here, we'll be able to do this even more efficiently because we've done it in the past. So I'm not going to read all the questions we're going to answer in this, but they're here for you in the future. But fact-based development, obviously, the most important part of good decision-making is using unbiased facts and data. And the good news is, one of the things that I was able to establish before any of you came on board and start to get us to do, and then George, when he came on board, this was also very important to him, is to make sure we had facts, right? So we did the road program evaluation, we did the park program evaluation, we looked at our vehicles, we looked at our buildings, we've looked at our space needs, we've looked at all these things that have given us facts that will help us. And if we didn't have those, we'd be kind of winging it a little bit this first time around, but because we have these now, it really is going to help us make a better plan. Then, when you get to... The next step of option development, it's really crucial that every department conducts analyses on the various options that they have, and develop options, and also what those options cost. What are the resources that are needed to do those options, right? Which ones have to be done? Which ones are want-to-haves? And part of that, and we're going to talk about this tonight a little bit, is the Board has to set some goals and parameters. We've set a bunch of these goals and parameters, and you're going to see this later, that we've already set, and that's one of the things we're going to talk about. Is there anything we're missing here that we need to add in, that we need to think about as a Board when we start to do this? So that we've given some parameters to where we're headed, okay? Because we don't want to just say, oh, you can come back here with 100% increase in staff. Well, obviously, that's not reasonable, right? So we want to do that. SWOT analysis, you're all familiar with, it's easy to understand. We had one done the last time. It was okay. Wasn't done at the department level, but it's a starting point that we can work from. And fact-based, the good news is, we have that. So we need to look at our operational options and our capital options, okay? The good news is, with our capital priorities, we've already developed our list of capital needs, so that is done. So that's a large part of the work we've done in a different project, so that will help us with that, and then we just have to prioritize it. And then financially, how are we going to pay for it? What are our options for how we're going to pay for this, okay? So then we get into the... And this part, that part, the Board will be involved in, but so will staff heavily. But when it gets down to strategic development and prioritization, that's really the Board. We have to sit down and make the choices of where this organization is headed for the next five years. So we have to get input from our constituents. The good news is, we have a lot of that as well because we have already done a community survey, so we have a lot of input. Then we need to prioritize what we're going to do. We need to select the options, and we have to solicit feedback through this process. Then the next part is putting it all on paper. So this is kind of just a structure for how that'll look, but you'll see what's really important here is funding mechanisms, metrics that we'll have, what are the key performance indicators to make sure we're hitting our targets? And then what are our financials? What do we think this is going to cost us, and what does that do to our budget for the next five years? Then lastly, we execute and we evaluate, right? So we're continuously evaluating, certainly every year, but maybe more frequently than that. We adapt. A plan is just a plan. It never survives contact with the enemy. So once it's in place, you're going to have to adapt it and change it and modify it. We have to communicate with people, and we have to make changes. I mean, if you hit a recession, you may not have enough funding, right? Maybe we, on the capital side of things, we find some grants for projects that maybe weren't our highest priority, but if we get 30% or 40% of it paid for and we still need to do it, it slides up the priority list because we've got money from another source. And then continue to collect data that we need. Now, some of it we have in place now already, where we're going to do these things every five years, but to continue to get the data that we need. And now this is where we really get to the discussion portion of this. So we're really on this part of it. So the fact-based development and option development, that's kind of where we're starting tonight, all right? And to start with, and I've talked to the trustees about this already, and I've talked to the staff about this already, but what we're going to do through the second phase, in particular, is we are going to have each trustee work with a department or two. And I'm going to leave it to the department heads and that trustee to figure out how they're going to manage the process and how they want to communicate. But I think what's important is that every month, we're going to have, probably half an hour before the Cow, we'll have an update on the strategy. Maybe it'll lean into the Cow a little bit because usually they're not an hour long. And we'll give updates so that all the Board can kind of weigh in and ask questions as we see. And also, certainly, the community, which I don't expect there'll be a lot of people here, but if there are, they can certainly come here and weigh in on that and hear what we're thinking about. So myself, I'm going to work with Public Works Engineering, and I will also coordinate with the Village Manager's Office. The Village Manager's Office is really going to quarterback all the departments and make sure that they're all kind of moving in the right direction on a day-to-day basis. But I'll work with Public Works and Engineering, and really, I put both of those together because they are our capital projects, and so they work hand-in-hand with the capital projects. So that's why I'm doing that. Trustee Healy with Finance. Trustee Katsinas with Police. Trustee Malani with IT. Trustee Compass with Development Services. Trustee Reardon with Recreation. And Trustee Radiszewski with Human Resources and Communication. And she's already been working with Communication on their strategy, so this kind of moves that down the line. HR, comms, IT, finance are really support organizations, so they really have to coordinate. We have to make sure we're coordinating with one another because they really support our outside-facing groups, whereas Public Works, Recreation, Development Services, and Police obviously have a big public-facing component to them. So we have, over the last several years, developed a fact base of a lot of things. We have an ADA plan, we have a risk management assessment, a fleet study, I'm just going to... A water rate study that we did, the facilities, like we talked about, the road and sidewalk stuff, the roadway assessment. We have a Parks Master Plan. Branding and wayfinding, we did before any of you were here. We did a comprehensive land use plan before we were here, and that's something we're probably going to have to do sometime going forward. We have Recreation Program financials, we have a salary study, we have another one coming, and hopefully that'll be completed prior to this process being over with. We have financial reports, we have our financial pro formas, we're going to have to update all those. We have demographics and projections. We have our business histories, how we've done so. We have a lot of facts here to work from, many of which, most of which, we didn't have five years ago or six years ago. Now we have them, and this is really going to help us a lot. So where I'll start with the Board and get you guys' input is... So we have a vision statement, which you see here, and then we have kind of five pillars of that, which is team, transparent, open, and honest government, customer service, fiscal responsibility, teamwork, and excellence. And at this point, if the Board has anything that they have issues with this, want to make changes to it, it's not written in stone, and obviously, it's a living, breathing document. But the vision statement itself, Village of Orland Park is distinctive and innovative community, is committed to building strong families, strong businesses, and contribute to the place we are all proud to call home. Obviously, transparent, open, and honest government, we have really been making significant... We've made significant strides towards that. And we've all said customer service is obviously a high priority, and we all want to be fiscally responsible. So any thoughts on this? Changes? Trustee Healy.
I like the idea of family being involved in our strategic mission, the vision statement, because I think what separates our ability from that is the idea that we want to be a family-centered community and pick it up, a place for people to raise their families safely. We want to do so much, the education system, if you have our purview, but still, we have to provide the recreational and the safety provisions that will keep families intact and make people want to come here for that. So I like that, the idea of the families. In a society that's trying to drive families apart and destroy that essential family structure, I think it's important that we do it. And with the teamwork and excellence points of this presentation, I also go back to lead by example. And we have our staff with their increased awareness of the excellence and teamwork things. I think they are taking that lead by example, and I hope now the community can take note of that, and that our community would be able to lead by example, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I agree with Bill, what he said, and I'd like the balance. I think my 14, 15 years living here, I can separate and almost... I live here as a community, I have my neighbors and things that we do as a family, with then trying to attract businesses that I want to be happy here, want to thrive here, but that I can kind of separate it in a way that I can feel like... Because you need, you need the outside dollars. You want to have a thriving community, you need other people to come here and spend their money, or you're going to have your taxes are just going to keep getting increased. So inviting enough businesses, the right kind of businesses, but also feeling like you still are in a small community with what you do as your family. So I think that hits it. I'm just kind of reading it right now for the first time, but I think that hits that balance, and that's certainly what I... When I talked about REC, I mean, that's where I kind of wrote down some things. I want to be a premier destination for tournaments and things like that, but not to upset where it's like crazy, where I've been to Rockford, and you can't even drive around on a Saturday when there's 700 soccer teams coming through there. We want to find that balance, and as I'm reading through that, I think that's kind of what is trying to be said, at least in the vision statement, so.
I think what you're going to see with REC, there's some of our overall guidance, one of the things in there that I put in there that I know is one of our Board's philosophies is residents first.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, we do want to bring in tournaments, but residents are the priority.
Yeah, and how any new business will affect the residents, and will affect our police department. Can they keep the level of service that they have to the residents if we bring in certain types or tons of additional businesses where they're stretched so thin, they're not... The priority is not the resident then. So, yeah, I'm kind of a babbling comment, but I hope I got my point across.
Trustee Malani.
Thank you. You know, I really like how this is written. It's pretty concise to, I think, a lot of the reasons that we're all up here. You know, if we think back several years ago, transparency, open, and honest government was something we wanted. We wanted to see this Board be more fiscally responsible, and we've all come up here to help with that. And I think that's a good basis for a start, and now as we continue to do a lot of the leadership training and things like that, we're building more cohesive teams, people are working better together. I mean, I've seen such a change in the last four years that this is kind of like the beacon out there that says, okay, we need to follow this. So I mean, I really like this, and I think following some of these principles will lead to the one at the bottom, which is excellence. So it's definitely... I'm in line with it, for sure.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a comment.
Trustee Radiszewski.
You know, I feel people, not only people that live here, but those who work here, who shop, you know, eat, all of those things. So whether you're a resident or you're visiting, I think the main thing is also it's trust. So it is safety, like as you have pointed out, but it's also trust in... I think that the village is known for its integrity and the transparency that we have, and I think that that's important, is to trust the integrity and the transparency that we offer. So I like the plan.
So flipping to the next page. So this was what came out of the most recent strategic planning exercise that I took part in in 2018. And I'm going to go through each of these little sections because I just want to see if there's anything that you disagree with as a Board. As I think everyone here is well aware, the previous Board and I didn't exactly get along on a lot of things, but on this stuff, I don't think we had any disagreement on this. I think we felt like this reasonably captured kind of where we were. And this was another consultant's framework and everything, but I just want to let you know kind of where it came out to see if there's anything that you feel should be different. It was really focused on the goals of the Board and the village and what they'd heard from the community. And so the key themes were that the Village of Orland Park is family-friendly with family values, it's neighborly with a great sense of community, it's a retail Mecca, it's environmentally and aesthetically pleasing, and it's a well-rounded community. And I think all of those things are true. Anybody have anything to add or change?
Safe.
Safe?
I mean, I think that we should toot that horn because not all communities are.
Right. Okay.
You see something welcoming, welcoming, welcoming community for people to come.
No, neighborly with a great sense of community. Okay. And then one of the things that came out of this was that the Village of Orland Park offers, so moving over to the right, outstanding municipal services, strong village leadership, responsive village staff, and quality customer service. We have a large variety of dining, retail, entertainment, recreational opportunities. One of the comments was city living with a small-town feel. I'm not sure I completely agree with that, but... And we have excellent schools.
We don't feel like a small town, and it definitely doesn't feel like city, either.
Yeah.
It's kind of somewhere in the middle. Something else, I think, now that we have more and more investment in the medical, we have more medical... I guess, services, I guess. Find a way to word that.
Anything else?
I think on responsible village staff, I think responsible and professional village staff, because they are all professionals.
Okay.
And one other thing is the addition to the trains on the Metro, the Southwest Service, I think we're a little more accessible to downtown.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
The last, over there, with the excellent schools.
Yep.
Are we at the top of the chain for... Are we at the top of the chain for, I, I would like to say for, for the history of this community, it's historically been there. I just hope we can make, get back to or achieve a high quality of schools. I think it's a commitment toward it.
I, I think historically, our schools have been excellent. I think if we are honest and we look at what's transpired over the last five years, particularly, I haven't looked at the high school level, but at the elementary school level, I think we've, there've been some issues that need to be corrected before we don't, so that we can continue to claim this.
Well, we're fact-based, so we should have facts to support, and I don't know, I don't have those facts, so I'd like to get more, some, I'd like to get more.
Any other comments? And so the Village of Orland Park should strive for, and, and I, I put in italics all of those things that we're already doing, right? Diverse, from 2018, diverse economic development and proactive planning, we're doing that, improving community engagement and communication, we've done that in spades. Establishing cohesive leadership among the board members, I think it took me, it took a while, but we're there. The diversifying revenue sources and tax base, we have, we've diversified the tax base by bringing in a lot more businesses, but we really haven't diversified revenue sources. We still have the same ones we've always had. Addressing village staffing needs, we've obviously worked on that a lot. And then we've promoted the village significantly as well, we've updated our parks and equipment, we've revitalized our, our youth programs and facilities. So again, even though we didn't have what I would say was a full-fledged strategic plan, we still came up with some good ideas that were things we definitely worked on. And then our future expectations and priorities from, you know, 2018, and we're going to develop those ourselves, but the stuff that came out of that was an open and transparent village board. So we really, and, and I think we've done that, you know, I don't know how much more we can do that, to be honest. We've developed a strategic and cohesive economic development plan, have we really done that? No, I think that's part of what we're going to do here. Identifying a few community brand to promote the village, that was kind of already done, and we've certainly been promoting it, but, you know, that could certainly use improvement. Develop the I-80 corridor, we haven't done that. COVID, the state of Illinois, our, you know, COVID didn't help. The state of Illinois is the biggest impediment there, to be brutally honest. It's just going to be very challenging to bring in businesses, as long as Illinois is not a great business climate. The good news is we are on the radar with I-80 corridor, and we do have projects that we do hear about, they do look at it. We have, and we have some stuff just outside the I-80 corridor that we're looking at. So that's just, these are bigger projects, it's going to take time. And diversifying the tax base, we've done that with our businesses, medical, those types of things, we haven't necessarily done that with different types of revenue sources.
And, and to your point, I mean, these are things that we've been accomplishing, but we need to make sure that we keep them in mind and continue to do them.
Correct.
Because we don't want to end up back in the place that we were.
Correct. So, so this is where we need a lot, need a bunch of input, and I tried to think of all the, you know, I tried to think of as many things as I could, and, and staff, this is really important for you as well, as we move forward and we start looking at our different, you know, start to answer the questions we need to answer in each department, you know, what, what is the guidance of the board? So feel free to interrupt me, you know, and, and if you want to comment on something, but I'm just going to kind of walk through these add things, because I, I don't think I captured everything, and there may be some things you, you know, that you want to discuss or have a different opinion on. But I think in general, we've given the, we've given the marching orders that we don't want wage and benefits to grow more than 3% annually, because then it really challenges your budget. The same thing with operational spending. Property tax rates, we've tried to maintain that we do not increase property tax rates, that if anything, they come down. So we focus more on rates than the levy itself, because it captures our growth. Multi-family developments, we know that that's a hot commodity in the marketplace right now. At the same time, we have, you know, what, 2018, we were the number-one homeownership of towns greater than 20,000 units, right? So we like, you know, the fact that people own, that they're more invested in the, in the community. So our policy has been that we're going to stay within zoning density where they can legally build it by right. We can't stop someone from building inside the density laws that we have. Otherwise, we'll only approve these project if it otherwise facilitates a worthwhile project. So that's been our philosophy. Personnel additions, that they should be substantiated financially, that we've made it on an economic development basis, we've certainly given incentives to prioritize backfilling businesses and, and properties as opposed to new development. Not that we're turning down new development, but we're, we're not incentivizing a retail place to come to, you know, bare ground. We, we are, we do have some incentives to backfill restaurants, for example, or backfill greater than 20,000 square-foot retail, because obviously we invite a bunch of new stuff, all it does is put pressure on your old stuff, and you still have, you have these vacancies. So that's something we as a board have done. Our target road rating from our last, from our road project is 70. I think in the next five years, we're going to get to 69, so pretty much there, right? Well, that was the planned spending. So we obviously have prioritized 143rd Street widening significantly, and we just got Southwest Conference to do a resolution on that fact. Parks assessment rating, we've had the position of nothing below a 2.51 rating, so nothing rated poorly, and we've addressed all those, and we've got a park assessment going on now. And when do we think that's going to be done? Yeah, so it'll probably be done after the strategic plan or during, right? Okay. That development incentives, we've had the philosophy that we're not giving away money, it's all performance-based. So, you know, it's going to be something new, nothing from nothing is nothing. If they're bringing something new, whether it's property taxes or sales taxes, we're willing to split that with them, but we're not willing to just give them a check. Park subsidies are currently, I think, at 52% is the board policy. Now, by the way, that policy goes back decades, lots of decades.
Mr. Mayor, can you explain that a little more? I'm just curious what that, I don't think I've seen that.
So our, our philosophy from a parks perspective is that we levy, in our levy, and what we support with property taxes, we subsidize 52% of our parks and recreation programs through our property taxes. Now, when this was put in, the stated goal was to lower that over time and reduce that into the 40s. It's never been reduced. If we, if we make the decision to reduce that, that means that we will be increasing our usage fees, you know, and, and that balance. So roughly, right now, half or slightly over half of our parks programs are subsidized in total. Obviously, some might be subsidized a little bit more than others, but that's, that's our philosophy. That's been the board's philosophy since way before we got here, that's been the marching orders of the village. Orland Health and Fitness, outside of that, we've, we've said with that, it needs to operate at a minimum of a break-even. Our goal is obviously that it'll eventually do more than that and start paying for some of its capital needs, but at least we want the operating expenses to be break-even. It obviously did not do that during COVID, I think it did do that last year, right? Or close?
We're close.
But close.
We're close.
Yeah, so, and then, like we said before, parks programs prioritizing the residents. So if you think, maybe even think about the, the departments that you're going to be involved with, you know, what, what are our constraints, you know, what are the constraints? You know, I think our strategic plan's going to come up with some goals as well, but what are the constraints that we're putting on our departments, you know, going forward?
I mean, the, sorry, the, the stress on the multi-family developments here, staying within the zoning densities, I know, like, you know, most of the new things we've been building are in our code, but maybe we need to maybe look at those codes and see, you know, do they apply today? Maybe we're pushing things into too small of a space, things like that. I mean, we obviously want to maximize, you know, like restaurant space, retail space, but sometimes if you put too much into one location, it could be a little too much, so maybe we just kind of start looking at how we can reevaluate some of that.
Well, that's definitely part of this project, or part of the strategic plan, is to, to, to definitely talk about those types of things. And we're, we're not going to end up with an entire land use code out of this, because that's a lot, that's a different level of work, different type of work, but what we will do, I think, is come up with a, our strategic goals for our land use plan and where we're headed, so that they have almost a, a mini-project that they'll do going forward after the strategic plan is done.
Process improvement.
Yeah, well, we have that, too, that's going on.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I think sometimes, too, when we're looking to do business with other businesses providing some service or what have you, I think we should look at Orland Park businesses, prioritize Orland Park businesses?
Well, right now, we have, what, is it 3% or 5%? Orland Park businesses get, if they're within 3%, they... But we, I mean, definitely as, as far as our finance and our contracting and public work, I mean, it's something we can, but we, we currently have that. It's either 3% or 5%. If an Orland Park business comes in and they get within 3%, we will pay them slightly more if they're an Orland Park business. We currently have that on the books.
Correct.
So, the, the reality is, most of the construction work, most of the work we do is construction, and we don't have a lot of construction businesses in Orland Park. So I think, you know, we do have some Orland Park businesses, like Next Day and some others that we use, some printers as well that we use from time to time, so.
You know, as part of this exercise, we'll actually get a listing of percentage between Orland Park and, and non-Orland Park businesses.
Any other thoughts or changes? Man, I, I captured all your thoughts in, in a half an hour of thinking. But I know we're pretty cohesive, and we have been giving this direction, so that none of these things are surprises. But, so, and none of these things should be surprises to staff, these are all, so I don't think we have any major changes to our, you know, to, to the, the marching orders, if you will, or the goals and constraints that we've already set. What we're going to find out, I think, is as we start looking at these, these options and stuff, we may have to change some of these things, because of the environment, I can tell you right now, and, and the, you know, the public should know, we know we have $110 million of capital projects that aren't funded. That's not including the ones that are funded that we have to do, that aren't funded. Some of those we have to do, some of those maybe we can delay, some of those maybe are nice, are wants, and we can not do them, right? So that's part of this process. But I can, I will also tell you that our, you've heard me talk about this a lot, I know it's wonky, but it's, it's the truth. The, the local government distributive fund, which is the tax sharing from the state, we had Kevin run the numbers, and since 2011, we've lost $45 million. And if we did that in net present value terms, it'd be more than that. So we've lost $45 million. Now you think about the fact that we have $110 million projects, okay? That's half of it, almost. Then if you think over the next 10 years, it's the other half, because we're currently not getting the full amount. I can tell you that every single mayor's council, every single one, it's their number-one priority. And cert, all three of the ones we're part of, it's their number-one priority, but every other one that I'm aware of, it's their number-one priority is to get this done. And we had enough sponsors on the bill to survive a veto last year. The reality is, is that the, Welch, Representative Welch and Senator Harmon basically said, we're not doing it. They don't understand it, they don't believe it, they said, we're giving you, we're giving you cannabis money and video gaming. And I'm like, okay, so we get a quarter of a million and we lose 5 million. That's state-of-Illinois math. They think that's a good deal. So they're doing that not just to us, they're doing it all around us, and a lot of the problems we deal with, with neighboring communities, you know, you think of a town, I, I believe like a town the size of Harvey is losing about 2 million a year, they don't have a fire department or police department, they can't afford it. So we are able to absorb some of this more on the capital end, they can't even fund their operations because of it. So we'll continue to work on that. Obviously, we'll have to have a plan that, that accommodates not getting the LGDF back, and we'll have, and we'll say, okay, but if we get it back, we'll be able to do these other things. So that would make, that would definitely give us a lot of breathing room, if the state actually did what it's, you know, what it has done since the 1960s and what it promised that it would do and it stopped doing after 50 years in 2011. So. Any other comments on this? And that, that's basically the start of this, and now we're going to, you know, I'm going to leave it to all of the, all the board members, all the directors, you know who, you know, who you, you know, are connecting with and working with, and figure out, you know, how you want to work the process, how you want to walk through it. We have a lot of this information is already there, a lot of the capital planning, obviously I'm going to be heavily involved with the capital, but when dealing, you know, with Joel and Keshid, a, a lot of this stuff is already done, we just have to start sitting down and saying, okay, what are the priorities, you know, what are the options for funding it? And that's going to be finance, you know, Bill talking to, you're talking to Kevin, what are our, what are our various options for financing this stuff, you know? I mean, there, there's a lot of options, what are they all, right? There's, there's property tax, there's, there's debt, what's going to happen, what's the projections with sales tax? What happens if the sales tax is a lower projection? You know, are, are there other usage, the, the usage fees need to change? All of those things, you know, factor in, you know, back to grants, you know, how many of those can we expect to see and get? And how does that all change our priorities? Because that's really where the rubber hits the road, is us making those hard calls. And I have some ideas on how to communicate that to the public, but we'll get to that once we have all these projects in place and all these various options. Are there any visitors to speak? Sounds like we have cheerleaders in the, out, out in the lobby. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Call and roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishevsky.
Aye.
We're adjourned, see you in 12 minutes.